Sir, to fully start and properly address this, one announcement I've got to make earlier on. Congratulations, Councilor Turner. And, uh, congratulations for increasing the population by one. (Laughter). She made a public appearance at the new, uh, Chinese New Year celebration event. It seems to have got past her first encounter with the law there. (Laughter). Yeah, I thought it was a strange sort of, uh, aftershave, and I think it's nothing. Yeah, right, um, addresses and, uh, can I first, personally? Ladies and gentlemen, it's quite long, so I'm going to read through quickly as I can, and then I'll let you read through yourselves later, if you're prepared. Okay, so, um, this concerns a request for attention on this scrutiny issue. And, the first part is to ask that Oxford City Council does an internal review to scrutinise the original and the ongoing circumstances of the arrangements and contractual agreement between the city council and the county council and what's called Expedience Oxfordshire, formerly known as Visit Oxfordshire Limited, which provides the provision of tourist information services at Oxford Visitor Information Centre and on its associated websites. An edited copy of the contractual document for this partnership was released to me after a frequent information request, but much of what may have been most useful information was hidden. The reason given for not disclosing fully was supposed reasons of commercial confidentiality. This included hiding the names of where actually signed the partnership in place. I think that at the very least, where has signed this agreement has no reason to hide their names, and the public and unhappy local tour operators like myself deserve to know who signed it, so that we know to whom we should be addressing our public concerns about the circumstance of this partnership. So partly, I'd like whoever signed this agreement, or whoever is now liable for the consequences of this agreement, to please give a rational explanation why I can find absolutely no mention in the contract whatsoever of how the councils or Expedience Oxfordshire will endeavour to offer an impartial service to those businesses, such as independent tour operators, who would be most affected by that new agreement. Part D, can the council explain precisely what is the legal company, charity and accounting status of the organisation which declares income and tax paid to HMRC for those services offered by Oxford Visitor Information Centre? I ask that according to public information, it appears it is not Expedience Oxfordshire, but another name company or charity that reports this income. If that is correct, please can the council explain what is the legal relationship between these companies? Part D, concerning one C, can the scrutiny committee advise if they are confident that none of the individuals named as shareholders or directors in either of the above organisations are or were former council members? I.e., are you confident that there is no conflict of interest here? Part E, concerns C again, to do with income and returns from sales of Oxford Visitor Information Centre. Will the council accept that due to frequent complaints by local tour operators, that we believe that Visitor Information Centre is pised market, it's on so-called official Oxford walking tours? Therefore, the city council should review and make knowing info concerning how much info Oxford Visitor Information Centre have earned directly from selling official Oxford walking tours? No very much sense. Whether as individual tickets or as private group tours? Not that Expedience Oxfordshire claim that as they are private company, they need not answer any F or I requests. S, does the city council recognise that according to documentation of the contractual agreement mentioned in A, ultimately it is my understanding that the city council appears to be finally legally liable for any misconduct, conflicts of interest, fraud, or any serious charges which an individual needs to litigate over? Therefore, is the city council willing to legally conduct a public report and an internal review into the circumstances of why local tour operators like myself are considering taking legal action to ensure Oxford Visitor Information Centre and its website and associated directors and stakeholders stop marketing their own conflict of interest, the so-called Oxford official walking tour? G, is a request for public investigation to review why most Oxford tour operators are unhandled with Harley Visitor Centres run? I say most, not all, but most. Over nine million tourists are believed to visit Oxford annually, so it's of utmost significance that these businesses, most affected by the necessity to be an adequate, fair, professionally and ethically managed Visitor Information Centre, should be consulted about how much confidence or lack of competency, uh, we the operators have and public in the capacity of the Expedience Oxfordshire to represent their interests. Finally, I request that as the city council claims its role to understand the needs to support local employment generation and local businesses, and the significance of the tourist industry too, it should therefore conduct a public review of local tour operators, guesthouse owners and hotels, either both existing partners, former partners or organisations which refuse to pay Visitor Information Centre for partnership status. Thereby adhere to the service and to review why Visitor Information Centre is so popular. My name is Alison Boyle, and I run Adalts and Tour, which is one of several local independent tours. Thank you for your time. (Applause). If there is going to be an added by, if you can maybe give a need to reply, or let some of us know. Thank you, Mr Ramon. (Inaudible).
There's a written reply in the, uh, in the big debate.
Okay, I'll see that. (Inaudible).
Thank you very much indeed, Almet. Um, my name is Roger Perry from Summertime Stars Football Club. Uh, we've run a petition perhaps, can you just get it to Jennifer, if that'd be possible? Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity, uh, to talk to you this evening. Summertime Stars is one of the largest youth football clubs in Oxfordshire. We have over five hundred, uh, playing members and over fifty teams, uh, as well as the club's overall growth. Of particular note, having as well the development of girls' football, uh, we now have ten girls' teams and over a hundred girls playing each week. We've had a very successful partnership with Oxford City Council over many years. Uh, the essence of the partnership, the council provides pitches and facilities, which we of course pay for in our pitch, uh, fees, and we provide football, we recruit the players, provide the coaching, organise the training and the matches. Um, and in common with all other youth football clubs, we are a non-profit organisation. All work is undertaken entirely by volunteers, we don't have any paid staff. One of the strands of our partnership, uh, is the development of the Cuts Road Bottom Pavilion, which you will all be familiar with, it's ongoing, the build is happening right now, seven hundred and fifty thousand pound project. Uh, and because at Summertime Stars, we've achieved the highest level of quality assurance with the Football Association, which is called Community Charter Standard status, um, that's enabled the council to be arranging six hundred thousand pounds worth of external funding from a principal sport England and football foundation, which is meant it's being able to keep the council's contribution to a hundred and fifty thousand or twenty percent of the project. So we're delighted with that and, um, have had an excellent service from officers in the development of that project. But I do want to turn my attention to Five Mile Drive Recreation Ground, which is also a very important resource for our club. It has six football pitches and each weekend is used by twenty-two teams, about fifty girls, a hundred and eighty boys, uh, between the ages of five to thirteen, so it's the younger part of our club, and of course their parents, who at that age group, parents are very much involved. Overall, it's about forty percent of our football activity happens at Five Mile Drive. Uh, the old pavilion was condemned a number of years ago, its demolition is imminent, um, and we're very grateful that the council has put a welfare unit in place, a temporary welfare unit, but it's been made clear that it is only temporary, may only be available till the end of the season. So, right now, uh, from our perspective, from September twenty sixteen, when our new season starts, there'll be notice that it is at Five Mile Drive. Um, I have said this is not acceptable and is actually out of step, we like to partnership with the council over many years. Uh, that's why we created the petition, and had a very strong level of support, which I just handed to, uh, in, with over five hundred and fifty signatures. Uh, in the petition, we are calling on the council to provide a basic pavilion at Five Mile Drive Recreation Ground, providing toilets, a small kitchen area and equipment storage facilities. As one of the parents who signed the petition said, "As a time when young people are being encouraged to participate in sport for many reasons, physical health, mental health, overall well-being, it's unthinkable that there would be no facilities on this site." So, in order as I just conclude, at Summertime Stars, we feel they're playing our part in organising youth football, we respectfully ask the council to play their part and provide decent facilities at Five Mile Drive. Thank you very much for your participation. (Applause).
Thank you, Mr Perry. And my name's Mike Lai, I'm the boardman of Park Sports and Leisure. Um, I'm also the manager of the fourteen under fifteens and have good relationship with, uh, Summertime Stars and Summertime Cores, as well as the other managers and the parents of the club and the club. Uh, so thank you very much. Um, we may say that the old pavilion, uh, at Five Mile Drive, the most used sporting issues, everyone's aware, um, is previously used by Summertime Stars to city storage and prepared play classrooms. Replacement, uh, the recent pavilion, uh, has given the city storage and areas by classrooms with space for officials to use if needed. We will leave this facility on site for immediate future, while we can work with the club around alternative funding options at Five Mile Drive. On the way to the petition, we just hope we try to work together and find a solution. We've got a place with the club, the Oxford FA, the brass cup and we're currently undertaking management furniture, plus a little pavilion which we've recreated, which is allowing place to Summertime Stars and the Cores. There's significant investment for city council, full foundation and supporting, including seven hundred and fifty thousand, um, pounds. And also to be aware of as well, that the city council, Oxford FA, the need and reference association, we have a meeting on February twenty-fourth, um, Wednesday before six thirty, nine PM, at Oxford Sport, the email should come out to me in LFA. Uh, again, what we're looking at is the funds, the underground maintenance, etc.
Mr Nigel Gibson.
David? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Almet. I'm speaking to council this evening in my capacity as director of the community interest company, set up to take over the operation of Temple Cali Pools and Fitness Centre at no cost to the council or taxpayers. In stark contrast to many other labour-controlled councils up and down the country, the labour-controlled Oxford City Council decided in December twenty fourteen that they weren't interested in letting the community deliver the health and fitness facilities that we want and need where we want to need them. Instead, you opted for a payment of three point six million pounds from Catalyst Housing in return for granting them planning permission for housing that is twice your permitted density. Obviously no conflict of interest there. Catalysts are now intent, they say under your instruction, on destroying a perfectly sound building before even submitting a planning application. This makes absolutely no sense if you really care about the community. This is a building listed as an asset of community value, clearly a facility that the community feels can be run for everyone's benefit. What is this facility we're talking about? Temple Cali Pools was rebuilt in nineteen eighty-six, designed with a lifespan, if properly maintained, of over fifty years. It's a rare example of what at the time was a revolutionary eco-friendly design, using ozone instead of chlorine. As well as the twenty-five metre competition swimming pool, the sauna and steam suite, the gym and exercise studio, Temple Cali Pools had the only publicly funded diving pool in the whole county. And because it's self-contained with this wide range of facilities, could easily be used for women's only evenings. In our proposal to operate Temple Cali Pools, we predicted the consequences of closure: elderly and infirm would suffer increased isolation and a reduction in health, a reduction in fitness of the population generally as they exercise less frequently or not at all, increased carbon emissions as people in the area are forced to drive somewhere else, and an increase in crime. All of these things have happened over the last year and of course remain unreported by you as you pursue your good news only culture. We demonstrated this clearly with the Blue Hole, the area from which, as a result of your actions, people now have to travel more than fifteen minutes to get to where they want to exercise. Independent research shows unequivocally that if people are forced to travel more than fifteen minutes for this, they don't go as frequently or at all. And you recently endorsed the Blue Hole and its consequences in approving your five-year leisure strategy, and you did this with no evidence or figures to support your policies. We've used the information from your statistician to show that over forty thousand people in and around Cali can no longer sensibly access health and fitness facilities. That's a quarter of the population of Oxford. And you've refused to track what the people who used to use Temple Cali Pools are doing now, claiming that most of them transferred to the new pool at Blackbird Lees. Well, what actually happened was that without anyone's consent, you simply moved the database from Temple Cali to Blackbird Lees, but it's not the same as people actually using it. You may have no interest in finding out what people are doing, but our recent survey shows clearly that people are either not going anywhere else or are not going as frequently. So the general health of the area is going down and inevitably placing more of a burden on social services and the NHS, in not meeting your own measures for target groups exercising, and worse still, as predicted, the crime rate in the area has also gone up. Did you really want all of this to happen? The answer could have been really simple: work with the community, let us take it over, and if we made it work, then everyone would benefit. The Temple Cali Pool site still belongs to you, the council, and you are in control of anything that happens there. The sale will only go through if you grant a planning application, one that hasn't even been submitted yet, let alone approved. And it doesn't make sense to anyone to demolish an asset of community value before planning permission for the proposed replacement is granted. Catalysts have said clearly that you're responsible for the timing of the demolition, and whatever the outcome, the Blue Hole will still exist, and the Temple Cali Pools campaign, the community campaign, will carry on as long as necessary to enable people in the area to have the health and fitness facilities they want and need. As a council, council officers and councillors alike, you hold in trust the assets of this city on behalf of the public, with a duty to provide these services. It's surely only reasonable that you support the community as much as possible and give us every chance, if we're prepared to operate a facility that you feel unable to. To that end, I'm asking you this evening to instruct Catalyst immediately to stop what they're doing on demolition of Temple Cali Pools and wait until after planning commission has been finally approved. Thank you.
(Applause).
Thank you, Lyda. Yeah, just quickly, uh, 'cause I think most of the points have been answered many times. Um, it looks like as a listening council, I'm just going to mention a couple of, um, points. Decisions building the university of Blackbird Lees, including Temple Cali Pools taken in twenty twelve, thirteen, and the new facility opened in December twenty fifteen, fourteen, sorry. Uh, the new facility has brought huge success, more than four hundred and fifty thousand visits in its first five months, forty-seven percent more than the former site's combined. We've also seen various, um, significant increases in targets, women, girls, seven percent, women, eight percent, users of areas of deprivation, twenty-nine percent. Um, and I'm going to leave that there, of course, doesn't have questions to ask.
Becky Howe. Good evening, Becky.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Becky Howe and I'm the president of Oxford University Student Union. This evening I'm going to be speaking to you about undergraduate maintenance grants. Since July, we have been campaigning to stop the abolition of maintenance grants. We met with Andrew Smith and Nicola Blackwood on the eighteenth of September, the National Lobbying Day to save maintenance grants. Andrew Smith wrote to Joe Johnson for us, expressing our deep concerns and disagreement, and Nicola Blackwood also agreed to raise our concerns with Joe Johnson. We joined thousands of other students on a national demo in London in early November, protesting to keep maintenance grants. Yet, despite huge opposition from students across the country and in the face of overwhelming condemnation of the socially regressive nature of proposals, the government deemed it acceptable to try and push through the abolition of maintenance grants in a committee of eighteen MPs. The only reason this motion was debated in the House of Commons was due to pressure from student unions across the country with cross-party support within the House of Commons. That the government has gone to such lengths to avoid scrutiny on this decision is incredibly concerning. I'm sure you're all aware of the arguments on the national stage against these measures. I'd like to present the results of research Oxford University Student Union conducted over the summer. We surveyed a sample of two hundred and eleven students in receipt of the maintenance grant. Their responses form my argument that the impact of the abolition of maintenance grants will be threefold. Firstly, our focus on debt aversion. Research from the National Union of Students shows that students from the most disadvantaged socio-economic backgrounds are the most likely to be debt averse. Without maintenance grants, this could have a huge impact on access to higher education amongst these students. We asked our students if, when applying to university, the promise of receiving a maintenance grant had influenced their decision. We asked them to think of this in terms of deciding whether or not to go to university, where to study, what to study and whether to live at home. Sixty-one percent said it had significantly influenced their decision, with a further fifteen percent saying it partially influenced their decision. In our survey, many students expressed how vital the grant had been for them in decide, sorry, had been for them in deciding whether or not to come to university. One said, "Without the grant, I would not, I would have been worried about, about the extra debt and may have decided not to go." Receiving the grant also somehow makes you feel like you do have a right to come here. It sends a message that education is for everyone, that you shouldn't have to worry about how to survive at uni. Another replied, "I think this would be the best possible way to dissuade as many low-income background students from applying to university as possible." I'll secondly focus on the financial impact on students whilst at university. To my knowledge, in setting policy, this policy, no research has been done on the effects these measures will have on retention rates for students, or indeed the impact they will have on the student experience. Two words that came out of the comments sections of our survey a staggering number of times were stress and guilt. Our students wrote that the grant has been a lifeline, allowing them to fully participate in Oxford life. Many replied that without the maintenance grant, the stress of trying to live in Oxford would have been overwhelming for them and for their families. In this respect, a loan can in no way replace a grant. A loan is just even more money to pay back in future, and our respondents were acutely aware of that. One respondent noted that they would have been incredibly wary of spending any of the money they would have needed to spend in order to live in Oxford, for fear that every pound will come back and bite me in the future with interest. I'll finally focus on the financial impact after university. These new measures will mean that students from the lowest income households will have to take out higher maintenance loans, so will leave university with thousands of pounds more debt than their wealthy peers. The decision reached by the House of Commons with a margin of only eleven votes is therefore devastating. In two thousand and twelve, when the government trebled tuition fees, they, they themselves singled out maintenance grants and the lower repayment threshold as the mechanisms by which they would continue to ensure the higher education were made accessible. Yet, with no mention in the manifesto, they have now abolished maintenance grants and retrospectively altered the loan repayment, loan repayment thresholds. These actions, along with the proposals in the green paper, leave us seriously concerned about the direction of travel in the higher education sector. Our MPs should stand with the students of Oxford, expressing their anger at the, at the government that has taken vital support from the students who need it the most.[1485.92][1487.20](Applause).
Councilor Ramley? Councilor Ramley, do you wish to respond?
Mike, you want a response?
Uh, I'm, sorry?
I've got Mike down, I meant, sorry?
(Inaudible) three, but (inaudible).
Bob? Shall I go through the list of councillors to the final? (Laughter).
You might have to go somewhere 'cause I'm underage. Yeah, sorry, we're going to discuss this in a motion later. I just want to thank Becky Howe and the people, the students that she represents, um, for their tireless campaigning against the cuts to government, cuts to the maintenance grant, and wish her all the best in making sure that we widen access to people from the poorest backgrounds. (Applause).
Mr Patrick McDonald. Good evening. (Inaudible). And I've spent my youth, my inheritance and my dignity starting a children's charity called Viva. Uh, Viva helped children at risk in the developing world and had its first office just across the way, on Pembroke Street, where we operated from the now dysfunctional Red Thornbox. It was sort of an interesting affair, we were all students at the time, and especially on Mondays after the weekend, you had sort of pride, you're open with a foot, to keep the smell of rest, but I'm not really here to talk about, uh, Viva. I have in fact left Viva two thousand and twelve, as I wanted to use my skills to start new charities and social businesses, addressing a whole range of challenges. And to that end, I've started what we grandy call a social innovation firm, uh, called Oxford Catalyst Ventures. And being in Oxford, we have been challenged to do something about the great need that we all know exists for first-time buyers to get on the ladder and to buy a starter home. Because as you know, Oxford is full of bright, young, hard-working people with great ideas on how to make our world a better place. They come here from all across the country to work together and they build their lives amongst us. Moriora Oxford has some of the world's best hospitals, staffed by young key workers, who like schoolteachers, council workers and bus drivers, find Oxford an impossibly expensive place to live in. Counselors? As they can't afford to buy, they're confined to renting and they can easily spend fifty percent of their modest income in not always brilliant rental accommodation. Call it an HMO on the Botley Road. And I guess my question to you tonight is, is that really the best we can do? I don't think so. And so together with a number of relevant experts, we have begun to explore what is possible, and we have to our happy surprise, found that something can be done. We do not simply have to wring our hands and pull our hair out, we can do something about this. We think it's possible to build house, uh, homes, decent, even beautiful homes, that are affordable for first-time buyers. It's been done in London, that cheap, small city just near here, and we think it can be done here. So to that end, we're building a growing coalition of architects, planners, landlords, policy makers, media people and social investors looking to solve or contribute to the solution of this particular issue. And we would propose tonight the development of a social enterprise right here in Oxford to build such homes. We've notionally called this new company of Oxford Smart Housing. And you could be the very first to look at the website, which is oxfordssmarthousing.com, I believe. Uh, Smart Housing would sell starter homes at a twenty percent discount to market prices. Only first-time buyers would purchase these homes and it could only be sold all to first-time buyers. As a social business, we would be looking to proceed in a collegiate way and to aim to improve social, human, environmental... to proceed in a collegiate way and to aid to approve social, human, environmental capital. If we succeed in building such homes, then that would take pressure off the rental market and, if located, right, would minimize commuting and the pressure on public transport. Just imagine that having to spend an hour on an A40 from Whitby Hill, somewhere from Byste. If we succeed in building such homes, then that would take... So this is all good, but why am I here today, tonight, to talk to you, the venerable elders of the city? I'm here today because this concept of smart housing can only happen if we begin to work together and if we find the political will to solve this problem. My team can quite easily put together a social business, but the big question is, can we find the political support to make doing so meaningful? And I guess that's why I'm here tonight, to find out. Thank you.
I believe councillor Riley might want to...
Since, as the camera can see, that's in the new, my house falling out, I should have said that. Thank you very much for bringing us your ideas and your enthusiasm. I do have to say, in the interest of realistic expectations, that this council does not believe, based on statistics, that the government's starter home scheme could, without innovation, the innovation enterprise that I hope you will bring to the idea is affordable in Oxford eighty percent of market rent is beyond the reach of the majority of people in the city. And therefore, our priority remains the building of new social rented housing to help meet housing needs. However, you have made some very good points, particularly the need for more family housing, for young professionals and others who are, of course, at the moment sort of live in A10. I lived in A10 on the Botley Road myself and got the first job here. And also, of course, the advantages of reducing commuting and thus reducing environmental damage by building homes in Oxford, where jobs are... That is a case this council has made consistently over many years. So I'm sure that, certainly speaking myself, and I believe I can also speak for councillor Holmes, that the plan will be happy to continue discussion with you about the provision of the housing that people in Oxford need.
Starting councillor Holmes.
Just briefly, I have to add, I think Mike is quite right that the government's definition of affordable isn't actually affordable for many people. We need to use as many different ways of addressing our housing need in this city as possible, and this clearly could form part of it. What it does have an advantage over what the government is actually proposing are at least permanently discounted, as opposed to discounted just for once. I think that's a fundamental difference in an improvement of what the government had to offer. We have just launched a review of our local plan, which we're looking at our policies. I hope we will take every opportunity to engage with our officers and be part of the next going forward.
Right, next we have Jane Alexander and Heather Delitz. Good evening, Jane.
Hello.
Yeah, in your own time.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me? Yes, okay. Okay, so I should be here with another woman, but she's been delayed because she's taking her child to some A-level thing. So I'm here this evening to tell you about one family's experience of Temple Cowley Pools and also my personal experience in the last few days. All sorts of people, including some who work for the council, have been telling us how they've been unable to access any pool for exercise since the closure of their local swimming pools at Cowley. From eighty-year-old heart attack survivor advised to swim for rehab, to families with children who are unable to swim at the weekends due to galas and private bookings and all others in between. Another swimmer just told me of having to drive to three pools before he could find somewhere to swim. As he pays over a thousand pounds a year for the privilege of being a member of Fusion, he was not happy. Personally, for those who don't know, I have serious health issues, and if I don't swim frequently, then I cannot walk. It's multiple sclerosis triggered by an assault. My body was stiffening from not having swum for three days, so I needed to swim, but ended up travelling nineteen point nine miles to achieve a swim. Ferry Pool had a thirty-strong group there, making it too busy for me to swim safely as I still recover from my broken arm, shoulder and pelvis. Then Barton Pool, where there was a private booking, so that prevented me from swimming. It just felt like a waste of an hour and petrol, and though I still had no swim. The following morning, I went back to Barton. This time, it was too busy and again unsafe for me to swim. At Blackbird Lees, I found lanes one to four were taken up by children's classes and seven to eight were private children's class, leaving only five and six for public use. I had to wait for steps to be put into the pool before I could go in, these being then removed behind me, which is a not pleasant feeling. In this year, since Blackbird Lees Pool opened, in the years since Blackbird Lees Pool opened, and to see the state of it is very disappointing, especially as the City Council has increased the payments to Fusion for maintenance, even though it now runs fewer pools. The disabled changing rooms are often used by others who dislike the regular changing facilities, especially by parents with children and those who do not want to use public toilets. Consequently, these rooms are often unpleasant to use by those of us who have no choice. Taps left running, often on hot, the room smells, the shower hose is broken, the floor and drain is dirty, and it's only a Saturday morning. It's also shocking to see both emergency cords tied up high instead of being accessible from floor level for anyone who has fallen and needs help. So much for respect and equality to people with disabilities. As I was about to leave the building, I saw the rain falling outside. Then I saw the rain falling inside where the ceiling was leaking. I wonder how long before this building, like Temple Cowley Pools, is condemned as being in immediate danger of imminent collapse. Numerous local people have contacted us about how they are adversely affected by the City Council. Councillors ignoring the voices of the people in this is a case of willful blindness. In the style of Labour leader Jeremy Corbyn, who clearly listens to the people, I would like you to hear this letter to Andrew Smith from Heather. This is Heather, everybody. Dear Andrew, I'm delighted to hear that you are still supporting a local swimming pool for East Oxford residents. I have a newspaper cutting that I keep. I treasure a view beaming with delight as you jump into nineteen eighty-six Temple Cowley Pool with three fellow councillors. It would be lovely to be able to see you reenact that leap. My whole family, from my young niece at primary school to her ninety-year-old granny, we all treasure the Temple Cowley. Generations of us have used these pools for fun, to keep fit, for exercise, for learning, for friendship and for community. We've gone there pregnant with aquanatal classes to keep us exercising, our bumps buoyed up by the water, making invaluable new friends to share our first experience in eternity. We've taken our newborns for aqua babies and ducklings. We and our children have attended swimming classes from our first attempts to keep afloat, to strenuous lengths, hind against the clock. We've learned personal survival and lifesaving skills to care for ourselves and to benefit our communities. We have met friends in one of the heartbreakingly few locations where all ages can come together in the same place, young, old, with children and without. We've celebrated our children's birthdays in swimming parties and pirate ships. It's the last place I saw my dear friend Jackie Porter, who did so much for Oxford and has a home retrograde named after her before she so sadly died. It's not just a pool. It's a place which has played a fundamental role in Oxford's lives for decades and has an important place in all our hearts. We need places like this. We need them, where we can walk to them and cycle to them. They need to be in the community, not miles outside the village. We need to be reducing the amount of traffic on the roads, not increasing it. So please, please, on behalf of me, my two children, my mother, countless other Oxford residents, please do everything you can to ensure that we in East Oxford once again have access to a local swimming pool. And if there's anything you can do to delay the want of destruction of the finest pool in Oxford with the widest choice of catering facilities, the best water quality, the loveliest views of sky and sunset, please do so now.
councillor Lyger, just quickly, very, very quickly, it's unfortunate about your wasted years. What I may suggest is to look at the Fusion website beforehand to have the various classes. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have done that, but I couldn't explain the thirty people who are in turn. We have less swimming space to do, so it's always tricky.
Judith Riley. Evening, Judith.
Lord Mayor, councillors, last year, in April twenty fifteen, a notice went up in a small landlocked corner of Cox's Yard, Temple Cowley, to the effect that this corner was owned by Oxford City Council and that it would be fenced off from the main yard in due course, which it was. Since then, this small corner of yard has been sitting idle. Cox's Yard is an employment site, is designated as such in the Oxford Local Plan, is in the Temple Cowley Conservation Area, and since March twenty fifteen, has been protected from development by an Article Four direction issued by the City Council and approved by the Secretary of State. On checking with the land registry, this tiny piece of land appears to have been owned by the City Council since at least July twenty ten. On behalf of the residents of Temple Cowley, I am asking the following. One, why was this tiny piece of yard in the Temple Cowley Conservation Area purchased by the City Council? Two, why is the land sitting idle? Three, what do the City Council propose to do with this plot, both immediately and longer term? Four, how much did the City Council pay for this piece? Five, is the plot currently earning rent or any other income for the council? Six, has the City Council derived any income from this site since it was purchased? And given that it was purchased in nineteen thirty-six and registered in twenty ten, why was the plot fenced off only last year? Thank you.
No response? No? Oh?
The deputy leader's gone to be with his wee old child, so I'll read out his answer. The land in the question was not purchased in two thousand and ten, it was acquired as part of Temple Farm, Temple Road, for some of two thousand eight hundred pounds on the ninth available nineteen thirty-six, so even before the Lord Mayor was here. Temple Cowley Pool, judge, Temple Cowley Pool lie in part of a school, subsequent to the building of the majority of the site. The land was officially registered in the City Council's freehold ownership in two thousand and ten as part of the voluntary registration title, VRT, that's in capitals, scheme. The small piece of land is currently unused as the council has no direct access to it. In the short term, there are no expectations to use or dispose of it due to this issue. Longer term, the land may be used to support local development. As far as officers are aware, no income has been derived from the land, which I think covers all of your questions except the last one, which you added in, and I'm sure Heather will be able to provide a written answer to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.